Let's call the meeting order. Please rise for the pleasure of the leaders. Thank you. Well, we'll start with the appointment of village officials, which are our two judges. But first, I'd like to make a, I guess, a special announcement that we're very lucky to have New York State Court of Appeals Associate Judge Michael J. Garcia here tonight. Even though it sounds like it would be below the Supreme Court in New York State, the Appeals Court is actually the top level court in New York State. Judge Garcia is an Irvington resident. He can actually walk here. I hope he did. It was called out. And he was recently appointed. Was it September?
February.
February. That wasn't as recent. Time flies. September. I don't know where that came from. But Judge Garcia was appointed by the governor in February, and he's been serving us ever since. So we're very lucky. Thank you for being here today. And we're going to start with, I guess we'll do the oaths first, and then we'll do the resolutions.
The appointment of the two officials. One of which is Judge Baker.
Okay.
And then you can do the...
Okay, so we'll do resolutions first. Perfect.
Just one.
Resolved to appoint the following officials. Mitchell J. Baker, Associate Village Justice, term expiring December of 2017. Brenda Giselman, Clerk-Treasurer, for term expiring December of 2018. I'll make the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. So now we'll go to the swearing-in of our village justice, Justice Desmond Lyons, as village justice for a four-year term by the New York State Court of Appeals Associate Judge Michael J. Garcia.
Raise your right hand. I, the honorable... State your name.
I, the honorable Desmond Lyons.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
Discharge.
...the duties of the Office of Village Justice.
The duties of the Office of Village Justice.
Of Irvington Village.
Of Irvington Village.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
And now the swearing-in of Mitchell J. Baker as the Associate Village Justice for a one-year term by New York State Court of Appeals Associate Judge Michael J. Garcia.
Raise your right hand, please. I, the honorable... State your name.
I, the honorable Mitchell J. Baker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Associate Justice.
Of the Office of Associate Justice.
Of Irvington Village.
Of Irvington...
Of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Now, I'm big on ceremony, so I think we're going to do these separately, Larry. I guess that's, is that my prerogative? Do them separately?
Yes.
Rather than, you know, kind of having both go at the same time. Maybe should do it separately. We'll go with the senior man first. The swearing-in of Mark Gilliland as village justice for a two-year term. I'm geez. As village trustee for a two-year term by Judge Michael J. Garcia. You're up first, man.
Thank you. Raise your right hand, please. I, state your name.
I, Mark Gilliland.
Of the Village of Irvington.
Of the Village of Irvington.
County of Westchester, State of New York.
County of Westchester, State of New York.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the...
Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Trustee.
Of the Office of Trustee.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Now for our rookie trustee, Mr. Lawrence, Dr. Lawrence Longi.
Raise your right hand, please. I, Lawrence Longi.
I, Lawrence Longi.
Of the Village of Irvington.
Of the Village of Irvington.
County of Westchester, State of New York.
County of Westchester, State of New York.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the State of New York.
That I will support the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Trustee.
Of the Office of...
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Judge Garcia. I was getting sworn in. I couldn't give that. Next up is my appointment of deputy mayor. No shocker here, I'm going to continue with Constance Keough as my deputy mayor. Thank you, Connie.
I'm honored to serve. Thank you very much.
I had better than no applause at all.
Yeah, right.
So your husband wasn't saying anything about it.
Oh, yeah, right.
And then next is the big resolution to set a schedule for regular village board meetings. I will read it. Resolved to hold regular village board meetings on the first and third Mondays of each month of the calendar year, except in July, August, and September, during which months the board will meet on the third Monday. Additionally, the board will hold work sessions on the Wednesdays preceding the third Monday each month. Regular meetings and work sessions begin at 7:00 p.m. All meetings held in the Irvington Village Hall unless announced otherwise. I'll make a motion. Can I have a second?
Could I just ask one thing? I swear...
We've got a long meeting. We got this one.
Won't be too many, Brian. Come on. Give me a break here. I was wondering if it would be also useful just to, at this point, restate the email and contact policy in terms of what gets on to the agenda as public commenters. A lot of people are not aware, and I haven't had the chance to...
And I think we could probably send it to the last as well, reminding everyone. But it's a fairly simple policy to get on the official correspondence list for the next meeting. So if you wanted to be on this meeting, say, you had to submit it in by close of business on Friday, so...
And on Wednesdays?
Or is it Wednesday? 12:00 noon on Friday. Sorry. So 12:00, it's Saturday. 12:00 noon on Friday.
We don't even read them, right? Generally, on work sessions, we don't read them.
Work session, no. Typically, work sessions don't have comments, except if it's on a certain topic, and then that would be kind of a special... So noon on Friday is the cutoff.
And the emails should have names?
Yes, we don't take anonymous letters. You have to have your name and your address. You don't have to be an Irvington resident, but you have to have your name and address and contact information.
So sometimes these email addresses, there's no clue who you are. You really need to know.
Yep. My official policy is I don't respond to any anonymous emails. I obviously can't respond to anonymous letters.
You said we should always copy them, Larry.
Yes, or office at Irvington and...
And we'll definitely get it on the agenda then.
That's right. That way, one of us doesn't miss a person.
All right, thank you. So that's my interruption.
No problem. So I'll make a motion. Can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is the resolution to adopt an order of business for regularly scheduled village board meetings. Resolved to set the order of business for regularly scheduled village board meetings as follows. Number one, call the order. Two, pledge allegiance. Three, announcements. Four, correspondence. Five, public comment. Six, consent agenda. Seven, public hearings. Eight, new business. Nine, old business. Ten, report of boards, standing committees, and officers. Eleven, public comment. Twelve, review of action items. Thirteen, return the comments. If there was a motion, can I have a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is a resolution to designate official banks. Brenda, I believe, is the same as last year. I think last year we had People's United. Longer, if my memory serves. But this is unchanged since the last year. So resolved to designate JP Morgan Chase, TD Bank, Webster Bank, and People's United Bank as official banks for the deposit of village funds. Make the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution to designate official newspapers. Resolved to designate the Gannett Journal News and the River Towns Enterprise as the official newspapers of Irvington. I'll make the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We try to do the Enterprise alone, but sometimes there's timing issues with the deadlines, that sometimes we have to use the Journal News. We do try to use the River Towns Enterprise as much as possible. Resolution to designate independent auditor. Resolved to designate the firm of O'Connor, Davies, Munson, and Dobbins.
They changed the name to PKF, O'Connor Davies. Is it the same firm? But they've updated the name.
All right. Or Mr. Dobbins. O'Connor Davies, LLP of Harrison, New York, is the official independent auditor for the village. This is their fourth year?
No, well, fifth year.
Fifth year?
Yep.
I'm going to get something right tonight. I'll make the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Approval of a purchasing policy. Is there any changes?
No change.
So resolved to approve the purchasing policy dated December 1st, 2015. I'll make the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nope, just one more. Approval of an investment policy.
We have a few changes there, and it's, we have to do our collateral agreements, which ensures the village funds in excess of the FDIC level of $150,000. And this is better to bring it in line with the state comptroller's recommendations. And we're also redoing our collateral agreement. And this is more attention, and we should really bring up to the current verbiage.
So basically JP Morgan Chase increased from $6 million to $8 million?
No, that's, no, right. That's just that, our own internal policy, so that in the event I have that much money and the bank, I guess in the past we've had a cap on how much it should be in each of the banks, so we were all eggs in one basket. So because during our tax season, taxes are higher, there's more money to balance, this is to increase the allowance, so that we don't, we're not violating our own policy.
And were we approaching the $6 million amount?
Absolutely. Because half of our collection is $6 million.
Right.
So that part was just to update our internal policy, and the other items to address collateral later in the investment. Changes are crossed out. I want to change them.
Those are the only changes, though, correct?
Those are the only changes.
And in the appendix.
And the appendix addresses the collateral. So it's the items that banks can pledge to collateralize our investments.
Any questions to that?
Some of it was just tightening up, where it was two lines, it had to be really written a certain way to be applied. Let's start from the comptroller's recommendations.
Resolved to approve the investment policy dated December 5th, 2016. Would someone else like to make a motion?
I'm going to.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This one, I always like, we're looking ahead one year in the future. Resolution to set the date of the next organizational meeting. Resolved to set the date of the next organizational meeting as December 4th, 2017. I will take the motion. Can I have a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Volunteer appointments. There were some revisions, I believe. Did you guys get your last...
I don't remember what day it is here.
The only changes...
Oh, here's the second one.
They're actually only to the Irvington Woods Committee.
I see it.
Designated a chair. So this is, I apologize in advance for butchering names. Yeah, Larry and I talked about it. I'll try to do it quickly, so that way you can hear the butchered names. Resolved to appoint the following volunteer committee members. Architecture Review Board, Gail Weller, as a member. December 2021 is the term to expire. Environmental Conservation Board, Thomas Jackson, Chair, December 2018. Ethics Board, Peter Derby, Chair, December 2021. Library Board, Laura Lilienfeld and Heather Thomas. Laura as the Chair, and Heather as a member. Both returns December 2021. Planning Board, Sheila Tai, as a member, 2021. Sorry, yeah, 2021. All, these are all December. Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee, Tanya Hunt, John Cashkin, and Rocco Richard Zulo as members, all for terms to expire December 2019. Theater Commission, Lori Chalk Goldman, a member, 2021. Tree Preservation Committee, Alan Richardson is the Chair, and Michael Bradley is a member, December 2018. Zoning Board of Appeals, Sarah Watson, 2021, as a member. Beautification Committee, all members. Rita Milo, Ann Myers, Mary Adamovic, Lori Antonetti, Heather Bancroft, Claudia Gasparini, Andrea Kirsch, Cindy Link, Pat Manfredi, Joan Nelson, Maria Resiculu, Renee Shamos, Mary Nedwinski, all members, 2017. So next year I get to read them all again. Community Advisory Board, Allison Felix and Tanya Hunt as the co-chairs, and Meredith Kelce as a member, December 2017. FACE. All members. Maria Cashkin, Allison Felix, Michael Hanna, Tanya Hunt, Meredith Kelce, Janet Kovacs, Jen Moness, Ray Wavetsky, Rick Rizzulo, Parker Riley, Kristy Schmidt, Angela Shaw, David Van Otzel, William Schwartz, and Joe Archino, all as members, 2017. Farmers Market, Tracy Calvin, Eli Halliwell, Ellen Passoff, Natalie Rivera, Susie Frommer, Hillary Levy Chanel, all members, 2017. Green Policy Task Force. Petra Candace, Jan Blair, Nicola Cottington, and Jeffrey Holmes, Cheryl Brandywine, Aiden Dennehy, Gene Vander Spuy, MJ Wilson, Judy Frimmer, Michelle Balashev, I'm not going to say that one. Emma Castalanco, Cleo Daviitz, all members, 2017. Historic District Committee, Deborah Hargraves, Ferguson, John Malone, Doug McClure, Dr. Rich Weller, Rebecca Fiorito, Neil Marr, Sue Robinson, and Joseph P. Lombardi, all members, 2017. Housing Committee, Karen Schatzel, Peter Bernstein, Melvin Tansman, Susan Robinson, Deborah Flock, Tom Thacker, Rose Noonan, all members, 2017. Open Space Advisory Committee, Jen Blair, Nikki Cottington, Richard Goldman, Tony Russo, Jonathan Elwin, Gaylord Holmes, and Herb Camp, 2017. Route 9 Corridor Study Steering Committee, Walter Montgomery, Eddie Maguire, 2017. Selma River Basin Advisory Board, Jan Blair, 2017. Traffic Common Committee, Walter Montgomery, Eric Oley, Alice Mccone, Mary Beth Dooley, all 2017. Village Historian, Nina Caprell Dawson, 2017. War Monument Committee, James Brandon, Greg Nielsen, 2017. Woods Committee, as members, Joe Archino, Maureen DePolly, Richard Goldman, Rocco Rizzulo, Dave Zweibel, Amy Sherwood, Chris DePolly, Heather Bancroft, Mark Barachin, and Dana Sabatino as members, and Chair, Nikki Cottington, all for 2017. I think, well, one thing from reading all those, we realize how many great volunteers we have, and we also realize how many times the same names show up on so many of the committees. So before I make the motion... We got the door open?
We have a problem with the door.
Waiting for minutes. Three tools. Mitch Baker went to get his key, so we should... Said he went to get it, he said he's going. Exactly. Thank you, guys.
Well, it's your committee.
So, yeah, so, you know, resolved to approve all of those. I'll make the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So again, thank you all. These are often thankless committees that often kind of work in complete anonymity. Some of them get to show up, you know, like the FACE Committee meetings are great, but something like the, you know, Planning Board or Tree Preservation Commission, they basically do it for the service aspect only. So thank you all very much for continuing to do that for another year.
Can we also say, if you're interested in any of these committees, please feel free to contact any of us, or Brian and Larry. You know, some of these committees are not fully staffed or need...
Alphonsus.
And so it'd be great if you want to get involved to do so.
That's my self speech. Well done.
Brian, also, would it be possible to be going forward to indicate which appointees are new?
Sure.
I think that would be just helpful to know.
I think a lot of them are returning, but...
And a lot of them are. It's nice to know we have new blood coming in.
Exactly. Next, I'd like to my column for the trustee liaison assignments. Didn't make too many changes, although, and obviously Larry wasn't here, so we got a lot of prestiness. But first Connie's assignments are the Farmers Market, the Historic District Committee, the Third Thursday Chamber of Commerce Tourism Outreach, DPW and Water, that was new for you, Connie. Irvington Town Hall Theater. Mark, I believe you're completely unchanged. ARB Building Department with planning and ZBA. ECB, Open Space Advisory Committee, Traffic Common Committee, and Tree Commission. Janice, you have the courts, the school board, the library, fire, and Green Policy Task Force. And Larry, welcome aboard. Housing Committee, Recreation and Parks, Irvington Woods, Nature Center and Trails, FACE Committee, and CAB. So as the former RPAC Chair, we get you where you're most comfortable. Perfect.
One other one, Brian, for me. I think I'm a liaison to the Route 9 Corridor.
That's correct, yes.
So, not that you have to add it, but...
No, but yes, you are.
I was going to ask if you would, the final list, if you'd recirculate it. I'll try to keep it on file for myself.
Absolutely.
We have to remember what we're supposed to do.
Exactly right. You can only refer to it. At least there wasn't a lot of changes to my list, so it was easier for me to keep track of it. So that's pretty much the heavy lifting of the organizational committee, and that was kind of more of a meeting. So we'll have announcements. The first one I have, and please everyone chime in, the holiday happening was a big success. I think that there was additional outreach this year. There was obviously the mailing, which I thought was, people were very excited about the mailing. It's so rare to get real mail these days. I have to thank the Recreation Department, the Beautification Committee, the Irvington Fire Company, the Chamber of Commerce, the Irvington School District, IVAC. You know, they all did an unbelievable job all around.
Years making their...
And the Police Department for making it such a great day. The tree lighting had, you know, the Main Street School singers were there, so I think that that brought a crowd, both, you know, because they were there, as well as, you know, I think people enjoyed having them there.
I think you should thank Santa for sitting on top of the fire truck.
Thanks Santa, who's a member of the Irvington Fire Company. No, everyone knows that. But it was a great day. I think it was a huge success, and there was a lot of people, including our Chamber of Commerce, the fledgling Chamber of Commerce definitely helped out. You know, so I think that it was a big success. I think we had a lot of momentum from it. I spoke to several of the restaurateurs in town, and they thought that there's been a buzz kind of since pre-October, you know, kind of going into Halloween, and we kind of kept the momentum going. So that's all good stuff. Yeah, thank you, guys.
I do this as quietly as possible.
No problem. Have a great night. So I don't know if anyone else wants to, I know Connie, I know you were around.
Oh, yeah.
Bye, guys.
Bye. Thank you.
Say goodbye.
I'm going to, I'm going to pick up... Goodbye, Lyons.
Heard it out. Clear that.
I'm going to make a personal plea next year for more adults to make beautiful houses, because if you have an inner architect in you just wanting to get expressed, this is your opportunity. So you go to Main Street School, you have to say you want one, and you sit there with all the kids, and you do anything you want with those little gummy things, and stick them wherever you want. It's very fun. Here, what do you think? This whole idea.
I think you better do it.
Next year, more.
Community service. Can I put some skulls? Can Halloween skulls on mine?
Yeah, you can put anything on you want.
Give me skulls.
It's a creative moment.
Yeah.
So it was a great day. I know Joe Archino's here. Thank you, Joe, for all the hard work, and I know your staff did a lot of the heavy lifting, so... And the Beautification Committee, as you all remember, last week we had two days of torrential rain. They were out there basically hanging things and decorating throughout the village during those two horrible days. Morbido Electric, again, has helped us out, and they helped actually light the wreaths and add a bucket truck, too, Joe.
They left us their truck in the van for Wal Day on Wednesday.
Which was great. So it makes it, I mean, I already got comments, I'm great...
Looks great, yeah.
Figure out which one is the artificial wreath.
I'm waiting, I'm going to go. I'm going to look.
I already got comments that people are happy our snowflakes are gone. That was like a budget cut kind of...
We got rid of two, and one of the poles has an artificial wreath, which the Beautification Committee is experimenting with, so we'd be interested to know what people think.
We should have a public contest.
This is an official survey.
I won't stop that hard.
Don't you have a leftover lag of Halloween candy?
But it's, we are looking for comment back from people.
It'd be great if that works, yeah.
So, well, thanks again for everyone for that, and I hope everyone has a great holiday season. My last announcement is that our police chief, actually won the Vanguard Award from the Westchester Blue Foundation, which is a police organization, and is for his commitment to the emotional well-being of his fellow officers and his dedication to the principles of the Westchester Blue Foundation. So just want to acknowledge that he got that November 19th of 2016, so congratulations, Chief. I know that you care about the emotional well-being of your fellow officers and the board members as well, so... Correspondence?
Quick announcement?
Oh, sorry.
Just want to remind people about our in-process Walk Safe Initiative to try to bring awareness of how to properly drive around pedestrians and bikers, but also as a pedestrian, what you might want to keep in mind. And we have, you know, various pieces of information, like handout cards and bumper stickers. But we also have this really great quick poster that has a bunch of tips, especially from the viewpoint of the pedestrian. Whether you're an adult or, you know, a school kid or whatever, it's probably worthwhile just seeing if you know all these tips. And this stuff is available up in Village Hall in the lobby.
Felicia, I see that you're here. Rush, she's tabling your correspondence until we get to the public hearing, since it was related to the rock chipping, so I didn't want you to think we misplaced it, but, so there's all enough announcements. Moving ahead again.
I'm not able to attend the meeting, but I see the subject of garbage pickup on Main Street's on the agenda as the train commuter Monday to Friday. Appreciate my comments or share the comments for on this issue. There are two primary roads from Broadway to access the train station, Main Street and Station Road. During the key commuting morning timeframe, Main Street has become nearly impossible to get down in anything that'd be considered a reasonable amount of time. Despite encourage our children to walk and get more exercise, school bus stops of virtually every corner. Given the age of the children waiting for the bus, they're always accompanied by adults. Moving picks up, moving picks up to every other block at a minimum, makes sense on multiple fronts, including a bit of extra walking for the kids and reduce time starting and stopping buses. Top of the school buses and cars looking to get to the station, we have garbage pickup scheduled at the same peak time. This should be moved to a time of the day when there's less congestion on Main Street. Also written about calming vehicle traffic and slowing down drivers on Main Street could be less than the frustration of driving to Main Street at this time of day, you'd only think that would improve matters. Living on the Tarrytown Irvington border, after an extra 15 minutes of time to get to the train station, then residents that live in lower Phillip Point, Main Street is a big reason for that. Seems we would be looking at ways to maximize all the things that we get, to get these done on Main Street that include picking up garbage. Nancy McDonald, 8 Sunnyside Place, Irvington.
Do we have, we've asked Greg Nielsen of DPW about changing the times on Main Street pickup and I can't recall what's, you know, to make it off, off the peak of morning commute and what was the answer to that? Do you remember?
I don't recall.
Can we just pass it by him again, just to see if there's something in the schedule that makes it difficult? Because I think the two, I mean, I know that the two are the stuff that causes people to get flipped out the most, the getting behind the large garbage trucks that goes down, but also the school buses can be quite a cause for people to drive quite unsafely, you know, zooming around them and stuff.
Right. Public comment, not related to the public hearing? Consent agenda, we had some provisions through the minutes, but.
Thank you for adding that, so people can access the statement easily.
If no one has any comments, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as revised. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Next up is a resignation from the Environmental Conservation Board. MJ Wilson writes, with great luck to Steve and Brett, I'm resigning from our village's environmental conservation board effective as of today. Taking this action of a lot of thought and delusion of conservative time, I realize we can no longer effectively show the purpose of joining the ECB approximately 15 years ago, but possibly affecting environmental responsibility development within Irvington, thereby protecting the environment, environmental functioning of our local ecosystem, maintaining our scenic beauty and reducing our carbon footprint. Thank you for finding the opportunity to serve the community. MJ, I'll say thank you for your 15 years of service. You did a great job and we really appreciate all your expertise and.
Definitely. She's still the Green Policy Task Force.
Yes.
Her job makes it difficult for her community as well.
So resolved to accept with regret the resignation of MJ Wilson to the Environmental Conservation Board, I'll make a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Public hearing, to consider a local limiting the hours when blasting and rock chipping are permitted, I will make a motion to open the public hearing. Can I have a second?
Second.
All right. Public hearing's now open. I guess you brought this up really largely end of the summer, we started talking about it.
Yeah, more or less, end of the summer, yep.
Frankly, I live on Riverview Road where, to be honest, there's a lot of blasting going on, I heard of blasting, sorry, rock chipping going on. I heard it pretty loud and clear. I didn't hear it during the week because I was typically not in the village during the week, but on the weekend, on Saturdays, I definitely heard it. I actually couldn't, my wife told me about it, that it was going on constantly and I said, well, you know, someone else's once in a while. This was pretty much the definition of constantly. So I even, one Saturday, took a video and shared it with the board. I think I might have done that twice, actually, just to say this is how loud it is from my house, which isn't even that close. So we do realize we have to kind of strike a balance between not allowing any kind of excavation or heavy duty excavation like that. We also aren't huge fans of blasting, which is the main other alternative to rock chipping. There's a lot of kind of unintended consequences potentially of, you know, blowing out windows and things like that. There's a lot more insurance requirements. It's just a, it's just a tougher thing to do. If you can avoid it, I think it's safer for everyone if we don't. So we kind of wanted to strike somewhat of a balance. So the village attorney tried to do that for us. We feel like we did a pretty good job, basically lining it up, I guess, with the construction hours during the week and then on Saturdays.
Oh, no, it's not. It's much shorter than the construction hours. Construction hours, I think, are seven to seven.
Yeah.
And this is much shorter than that. It's nine to five. Construction hours are also permitted on Saturday. This is not allowed on Saturdays. So nothing on the weekends, nothing on holidays and only from nine, twenty-nine and five during the week. So it's quite a bit more limited than construction hours.
So how do we address Bridge Street's concern about how they would prefer to do any kind of work in the future, whatever that might be? I guess that would include area like the Trent building as well, the railroad district and the waterfront district. They'd prefer to be able to do that on the weekends and not during the week, so do we just tell them tough or is there some rationale? I mean, down at Bridge Street, I could see possibly the rationale if they're letting them do it on the weekend.
Yeah, it's not actually.
But, you know, when you get up closer to residential, like in the Trent area, that's, that's probably still needs to be under the weekend guidelines.
I guess my question about how close are residents to Bridge Street? If you're saying from your house on Riverview Road, which is quite far from the current site, what's the, what's the noise level for those residents who do happen to live within, I'm not, I don't know how many feet it is or how many feet, I don't know how far the, the sound travels, but let's not forget that there are residents not too far from Bridge Street.
Yeah, right.
And consider their needs as well.
And in a lot of ways, I mean, I definitely understand the point that Bridge Street's bringing up, but I also feel that when it's, you know, you're kind of doing commercial work and you're annoying commercial tenants, it doesn't bother me as much as residents that are, you know, kind of in the area. And, you know, I did ask the management of Bridge Street what they, you know, how often they thought they'd be chipping and things like that. They said they didn't know. You know, so I think it's almost to me.
Do they have such a.
Were they rocky?
It's rock. What rock do they have it?
Yeah.
Actually, there's, well, the Trent building, which.
Well, yeah, but that's, it's like next to residential, you know, but it's, but down the water.
If they ever did any construction under the parking lot, there are rock croppings and rock things that, I think when they were doing, I might be wrong in this, but I think when they were redoing the buildings and they did the large conduit for Bernie Burke under one of the buildings, they had to do chipping down there, I think. Not extensively, but some. I'm not quite sure if I'm remembering that correctly, but there was a lot of rock that came out of that area.
So is there anywhere in the village that you're not within the sound range that chipping creates where there are no residents in that area? I mean, I guess you could say maybe right in the middle of the Columbia property or the woods or the, you know, but this is.
I mean, to me, the only thing I can think of is some kind of escape valve and as it says, you know, you can, if you request a waiver from it or something.
Well, that's the only thing I was thinking about is potentially, you know, a special permit or something, kind of a waiver from the planning board in, in extreme conditions, but I would say that that's, if no one else is comfortable with that, I'm.
I mean, to me, I almost would rather worry about that.
Yeah. It would be the planning board, this board would do it.
It would have to be us, okay.
Well, if you want.
Okay.
Yeah, well, the planning board wouldn't have authority to do it. You couldn't have signed it without changing a lot of laws. It's not.
Okay. So they could still come to us anyways for relief if they needed to, even though it wasn't in the code. Someone could petition us.
Yeah, they could come to the board. I mean, there's not, there's not a provision in the law for it, but you're the ones who make the law, so you could, you know, make a law that exempted them for the moment or something.
But the point is, they could come and ask if it was a specific circumstance, but they are changing the proposed law as written.
Yeah.
So I would be more comfortable.
It would be the law for it, but I mean.
I think too, like to me, if it's something where, you know, they have to put in a furnace and they have to chip rock, that's different for a weekend or something, that to me, that's different. You'd even allow maybe on Sunday, an emergency as opposed to a project like that's currently going on behind the high school that's months and months and months.
And I mean, what, you maybe don't even have to change the law, it can be a direction to the.
To enforcement.
Enforcement officer, whoever it is.
That brings up a different, this is more of a philosophical question, you guys have done.
We've removed very quickly.
So, yeah, I'll take up about two minutes on this one. I've been thinking a lot about the construction behind the high school as an instance of, you could also have said this with maybe the houses, I'm even forgetting now, off of Park Lane, you know, that small development, a small cul-de-sac.
Harshwood? Hugh Hill.
Hugh Hill, the road, yeah. That was a case where, you know, chipping went on for quite a while because even though there was a limited number of sites. Part of what it comes down to is that the issue about, our code allows essentially unlimited, effectively unlimited modification of the topography of the site. And when you're getting up to the top of Hugh Hill, I mean, Heritage Hill Road, it's just rock outcropping. I mean, there's very little soil there and they're getting this rock in the wood. And, you know, there's, there's a propensity to try to build houses on, with, you know, level front yards and backyards, even though you might have large retaining walls around it. And then, you know, people want to put in pools after the fact, and so there's even more. So there's something about, what bothers me about this particular regulation is only that there is no timeline. Like at what point does chipping become unreasonable to the, to the neighborhood? You know, if you're talking about two weeks or even a month of chipping, I mean, I, you know, whatever, heck, maybe. But if you're talking about something that's going to take months and months of chipping just to get.
To change the plan.
To change the topography, then there's, to me, there's an issue and, and I don't know how you address it really. I know there were, I think Mary Ann mentioned, there were some time limits in some of the code that she looked at previously, there were limits to how long.
I think rock had a limit on the.
And I could see some of that to give neighbors a choice. I mean, either, other than that, we have to have the developer put a fund in for noise canceling headphones or something, but. And part of it is like because of our, the way our building code is written, there's not a lot of, especially if you're on, on level sites, there's not a lot of support for being able to follow the topography with the house. And we've talked about this before. I don't know if that would be a solution, but to me, we are just, this law, although it's good for the neighbors, is still kind of underlying, it perpetuates something that seems a little, some of these sites would never have been considered buildable at one point in time, you know, and now they are, since the land is so valuable.
And you also have all those houses that the basement is like this far in the ground.
Well, that's what, that's part of, yeah, that's part of it. So I don't know what the answer is to that and, but that's my philosophical quandary, because I wish there was, I wish that we could do more than just say, let's pass this for now, it's a Band-Aid, we know it's important to give people peace and quiet on the weekend, but what are we talking about in terms of the long run and the type of, you know, because a lot of the development, if there's anything left infill, will be on slopes and in, you know, areas where there's going to be even more and more requirement for this kind of activity, so.
So the point, I just, yeah, the point you make, Mark, is of the, I think it was the first part of that where you talked about how long the noise would go on. That's, that made me think, is there, is there any way to require or, I don't know the word suggests is not, doesn't do anything, I guess, but if the neighbors had an idea of how long the project would be, you would, you could at least, maybe you could say, you know, we'll take our vacation during this time. You know, you could, you could have more pre-planning about your life if you knew it would be this and then maybe it wouldn't be for these several weeks because they, the contractor would be doing something else or something. I mean, having had it worked out on my house, I know it's awfully hard to figure out when you're going to do things, but is, does anybody have any thoughts about how to make it, make more knowledge available to the nearby residents of a project? Some kind of notification? Does that ever happen in, in any regulations you've seen, Mary Ann, or that issue?
I mean, in a way the blasting does, you have to notify that blasting's going on. I don't know that you have to notify for how long it's going. I mean, you're right, I mean, I think you saw it, right, in a very elaborate regulation of it, but I thought that wasn't the direction the board wanted to go in. I mean, there are other directions you can go in.
Well, I guess.
But then that's a question going back to the drawing boards.
I was thinking this might be a stopgap, you know, we think about, you know, because it seems like the next step is so much more complicated. This, this is a Band-Aid that can help people.
It could certainly help immediately. And I think it's important to move forward with it because anything else is going to take us a while.
I just, I agree totally. I just don't, I was being philosophical, meaning that it's something that we really should think about and maybe that has to do with input to the comprehensive plan as well, I mean, you know, or to the building code, I don't know what, but.
Important to me, you know, I mean, I think I'm, my first reaction was, again, this is going on for three months, six days a week, you know, almost the entire.
Longer, longer, longer. You can't lay longer. Thirty-two, thirty-two weeks.
Thirty-two weeks.
Minimally.
Not, not on one property. You're talking about a collection of properties.
Three sites, thirty-two weeks in my backyard.
Oh.
Six days a week.
So, to me, that, my, my question was, you know.
Yeah, they're not.
Is there some way you can say, well, you, that, that, that plan is, you could just sit at the planning board and say, no. You know, like.
Well, they have to have a basis to say.
Yeah, exactly.
They don't have a basis.
No. And I also came to the point where you say, well, if you could only say you can't have rock chipping for, pick a number, sixteen weeks, would it then just push it off and it would go back again? You know, like, I don't know.
It has to be more.
Economically not viable for them to.
Because it's going to push it off. Right. Right. Which I think is, you know, I think, again, this is part of the.
It's why, yeah, that's why I say, I know it's complicated, but.
Also, like the situation you're saying in three different houses, if you put a, let's say sixteen week limit, sixteen weeks at one property, sixteen weeks at the next property, sixteen.
Except if you did it at subdivision levels, you know, I suppose.
If you do, but it, you know.
It's complicated.
It's complicated.
Yeah, it is complicated.
Is there, is there a, the final part of my little mental game, and I didn't know which way I went, we all say that blasting was made very difficult in our code to the point that most people choose not to. What about past a certain point, if chipping becomes difficult such that people have to reevaluate whether it's better to blast? You know what I'm saying? It's like, at some point, you know, I know there's dangers in blasting, but, you know, blasting for a couple of days is probably going to be a lot better than chipping for thirty-two weeks. This is a sense.
Unless there's some danger of flying things that land in your window or, I don't.
Yeah, exactly.
It's like, choose your poison, right? It's just, it's a terrible situation.
So that's the kind of discussion we can have, hopefully, going forward.
Yeah, I don't think this is necessarily the end of this. I think another key point is how many other sites are there similar to this in Irvington? You know, I think that was another question we brought up, like, you know, are we going to be making a very complicated law and this is, you know, the last three, where there's, I think there's a few more up there now, but.
There are three, at least three more up the hill.
Yeah, there's, there's a number of them.
This would be half the work.
But remember Brightview, if it had gone through, would have entailed the same kind of chipping against the rear hillside. Any work that goes along South Aster or North Aster, if it occurs in the future, will probably require.
Yeah, Carrefour property, you know, Nielsen is not, you know, Brightview, there could be someone else in there.
Right, if they, if they get approval, right.
And there probably are other spots too, so this is probably something we should.
What about the, the Denora property that's beginning to be?
Yeah, there may be, there may be some rock there.
I think they've done a test, I think they think that's Manly Philip there.
Fingers crossed.
Well, fingers crossed, because when we went up through the school, we hit a lot more rock than was expected, even though there was a lot of testing beforehand.
Yeah, it always happens, you never know what's under the ground until you hit it.
So, I mean, I, I think we should still definitely move ahead with this law, which is, you know, provides some relief.
Were we going to hear from the public?
Absolutely, absolutely. I just want to make sure that we kind of are all together up here and then have a couple pieces of correspondence. We had one other one that we read in correspondence last meeting from the Felixes, Alan and Allison, who also live on Riverview Road, and expressed their support for doing something. We also have one, I don't know, would you rather, would you rather speak than you read your letter or?
I would just read my letter, so.
All right.
I think that represents it.
We're residents of 32 Riverview Road. We are writing about our concerns regarding the rock drilling in our neighborhood. We recognize this activity may well be necessary, but we're not opposed, we're not opposed to development. However, we are deeply concerned when the extremely loud and disruptive procedure continues past normal construction hours and particularly when it occurs on weekends. At these times, this drilling makes being outdoors or even near a window extremely discomforting. We are particularly troubled because this activity is not just extremely loud, it is also concussive. We are concerned about the intensity, relentlessness and overpressure of the drilling may damage our homes and property. And we ask that the parties responsible immediately find a way to drill more responsibly by refraining from drilling on the weekend or after normal construction industry hours. Sincerely, Lucian Pitnikin and Bill Pierceall, my neighbors. We heard from one contractor who actually said, hi Ed, thank you for informing us. I thought the new regulations would be very reasonable and accommodating. I don't know if that's the people that are up there or is that just, those are just, I think we reached out just to several.
Can you say the name of?
Sincerely, Lucius Pitnigan and Bill Pierceall, my neighbors. Um, we heard from one contractor, uh, who actually said, hi Ed, thank you for informing us. I thought the new regulations would be very reasonable and accommodating. Um, I don't know if that's the people that are up there, or is that just the, those are just, I think we reached out just to several, um-
Can you say the name of the-
Yeah, it's, uh, AG Contractors, Eleventh Street, River Street, Suite 11, Warwick, New York.
I don't think that's the same.
I think we kind of blasted two people.
Blasting, huh?
Exactly.
There was about eight or so contractors, just ones that do business.
Yeah, one, two, three, yeah, so that's, there's about, called ten people that we sent to, just to see if they had any strong feedback. Um, that one was in support, Bill Thompson, who we already mentioned down at Bridge Street, uh, Brian, there's so much blasting noise in the village that it needs to be regulated. From Bridge Street Properties' perspective, this law does not work for us. We cannot do any such work during normal business hours. We schedule this type of work on weekends so we will not disrupt our tenants. We oppose, as is written, request that the board consider making a change that regulates the business and waterfront disacceptability. Thank you. So-
Let's go back to your earlier comment, if it's discomforting commercial tenants.
Yes, that's, uh, yeah, I, uh, it doesn't, it's not as bad as, as, as having residents in the area that aren't all in it together. Um, so that's all we have for correspondence. Does anyone from the public want to talk about the law?
Yeah, um, so, yeah, come on.
Susan Stewart, sixty-eight Riverview Road. The work that's been happening for the better part of a half year is just in my backyard. Um, so, at least thirty-two weeks, that's been the most I've been keeping track of. Surely longer than that. Um, I work from home. Uh, the only, I, uh, the only place I can do a conference call is in my basement, uh, because if I do a conference call anyplace on my first or second floors, uh, people all over the country hear the jackhammering. Um, and the jackhammering, uh, generally the hours, except when it started to get dark, have been seven to seven, Monday through Friday, Saturday, nine to five. Caitlin is one of my two children. The only time this summer that they could use our backyard was on Sundays, or, um, you know, generally on Saturday nights after seven o'clock. Um, and it seems to me that that's probably not enough time to be able to enjoy my backyard. Um, they've, they're mostly completed with excavation of three sites up there on the top of the hill. There are at least three more, um, so it greatly concerns me that, um, we might have, uh, you know, twice as much jackhammering as we've already had. So, I would very much like the village board to pass the law that's in front of them, and then consider further activity. I think the remarks that Mark Gillen made with regard to not having tools within sort of the Planning and Zoning Board tool chest to take a look at how much excavation has to happen, maybe needs to be looked at. I, I understand that people need to be able to develop their properties, but, um, it comes at quite a cost to the, the people in the vicinity. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, man, you're sure. Thank you, guys.
That makes me come up with one other comment. Should we have a lunch break in here? I mean, I'm sorry, but I'm thinking about like, you know, if you-
An hour pause.
You know, like, an hour pause at, like, lunchtime or something. Normally, I mean, you could schedule your calls then, for instance, or somebody who was at a home office could-
Yeah.
As opposed to crawling into the, you know-
Crawling into the basement. No, I, look, I totally appreciate that, um, I, you know, I'm on the phone all day, but that, that's, but I, but I appreciate the, the intent, absolutely.
Yeah, like a breather.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's unrelenting, yeah.
Coffee breaks, two coffee breaks at lunch.
Right.
All right.
Another public comment? Please.
Lori Decker, it's Three Stearns Ridge. Uh, so we happen to live in Dearman Park where the construction is happening. We are definitely in favor of shortening the work hours. Um, it's super noisy. I respect that, um, developers and people want to build homes. We built our own home. We have to chip rock as well. There are a lot of restrictions as far as, um, the height of your home, and you have to put a foundation in a basement, so you need to chip. It is all rock up there. Um, but I would take that into consideration when you talk about limiting, no one wants to be chipping for a long time, it's expensive. So, we, limiting the hours is important, but I think you have to be careful with construction and figuring out the right balance. Um, the other thing I want to mention is, I believe that people can chip whether or not they have a totally approved plan. I, are they allowed to at all, or no?
They can't still.
Okay, because there is, there is, there is some topographical work that can be done ahead of time. There, there is some improvement to the land, I believe. So, I don't know how extreme, how much of that is allowed before there's actually a full approved plan.
Streets in a subdivision, you'd be able to, to chip to get that grain? Would that be possible?
But I would just be careful about that, because you don't, if, if there's not an actual planned home, I don't think people should just be excavating without, you know, without the house approved and being built and, and all of that. Um, and, you know, I, there's been a lot of movement up there, and at times, something was sold, it wasn't sold, but the chipping was still going on. So, I think that it would be useful to make sure what's allowed, uh, in terms of that. And I would even say five o'clock is still too late, it should be closer to four, um, because especially in the summer, it was really awful. You couldn't have a backyard barbecue until they were done, so.
I just had a question for Mary Ann. Is our, I'm sorry, does our code require a basement in houses? No.
I mean, I, the zoning code, I don't know, I, I don't know if the state building code has, but I don't believe it requires-
Why are houses in the villages that are on slums?
Just, we don't have a set, the village doesn't have its own building code.
Right.
It, it, it used to, the, the state building code is the village's code. But I, I'm not a, um, a building code expert by any means.
It seems to me that you, you do need a foundation, but I'm not sure-
I have a foundation, I'm not sure it needs to be-
A full basement, yeah.
Any other public comment? Any other comments from the board?
Well, the, so the issue, we, we picked five P.M., we picked nine P.M., um-
Nine A.
Uh, excuse me, let's just do it at night, what do you say? Um, are we, I mean, there's, the, I guess there's some, there's greater reason for five and nine, just because it's, it's the standard business hours, so.
On the other hand, if we want to give chance to kids to play outside, you know-
And then, you know, it-
Four o'clock's a good argument.
And then there's, you know, it gets too complicated.
Construction will start early, so maybe eight to four instead of nine to five.
I wonder, um-
Actually, I would be happy to do that, but, because most of the kids are off to school by then, but, uh, yeah, right, you have to-
You know, there are, there's as many reasons for early as a problem as later as a problem. I, I don't know, you know, you create one problem and you solve another, um, I guess.
By the way, by changing it to four, I think, yeah, I mean, that's a substantial enough change that you'd have to-
Oh, renotice it, okay.
Renotice. I mean, it's, it may be worth it to you, but just be aware of that, because I think, I mean, it may not seem like such a big deal to you, but it, it could to somebody who-
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm saying, I-
Jeez, it's just too early.
Yeah, I, that's what I'm saying, I think there could be as many negatives about earlier as later.
You could do it, but you have to renotice.
So, I would suggest that we have something in front of us now that we can pass tonight a law for immediate relief. If we can then continue exploring the larger issue of how this is approved, we can also, in the course of that, also ask people, is this working for you?
Or, or do you have a better schedule? Yeah, we have a, a live test case, so, you know, they'd say that they'd rather it be earlier and end look in earlier, or something like that.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, I agree.
All right, I'm okay with the thing.
Very clear that we're looking for input on this.
So, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Results of adopt a local law limiting the hours when blasting and rock chipping are permitted, I'll make a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
We really cleared everyone out on that one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
They didn't even wait to see if we passed it.
They knew, they knew we were gonna-
Spread the word!
Say, I will.
Spread the word!
Thank you.
So, once we mail this in, then it becomes effective, is that how it works, Mary Ann?
Yeah.
A week?
Um, a little more than a week. No, to get it back.
Well, you, you don't have to-
As soon as it gets to the secretary, don't you get it back?
Soon as it's filed.
As soon as it's filed, there's a couple of days.
Saturday?
You're having a party?
We will if it gets in my-
Well, so then we should also get the word out to the contractors that are up there.
Yeah.
So they know that it's taken them. I guess, is that your, would you, that be your follow-up?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Approval of contract twenty sixteen thirty-one with McCarthy Finger, LLP, for legal services related to cable television franchise negotiation.
So, this is a, a joint effort among four communities in the Greenberg, four, four of the Greenberg villages, Terrytown, Dobbs Ferry, Ardsley, and Hastings, uh, Elmford, I believe. And, um, we, uh, are all entering into, uh, contract discussions to renew our franchise agreements with Verizon, and, uh, we felt that it was wise to, uh, bring in an experienced firm, um, at doing these negotiations and split the fee four ways. Um, there is a possibility that, uh, that the town of Greenberg might, might be interested in joining as well, because their, their renewal's up around the same time. So, those were preliminary discussions at the village officials meeting the other night. But, um, at this point, we're entering into it knowing that there are four communities together on this, and, uh-
Yeah, and it's Ardsley, Dobbs, everything, and Terrytown.
Sorry, yeah, Miss Ardsley.
The other municipalities, Elmspur, Hastings, they're also, they were also interested in joining, but they're just not up for negotiation.
They're different, yeah, and Sleepy Hollow as well.
Sleepy Hollow, yeah, so they're, they're on offer years, but, uh, we all, this was actually Larry's idea to, uh, to do this as a group, so thank you, Larry. Um, and it makes sense, because there's more of us negotiating, about ninety-nine percent of the terms are identical, and we're all individually negotiating them with a giant corporation, so.
So, my question is, do we lose leverage or gain leverage vis-à-vis the dangling poles issue and the excess wires, the dead wires, you know, the, remember how-
Yeah, it's not cable vision, that's a problem.
No, this, oh, you said Verizon.
It is Verizon, but it, it's not the cable TV that's a problem, it's telephone franchise that's a problem. This is, it has nothing to do with telephones.
It's not the fiber network.
Um, the question I have is, this is, requires binding arbitration, uh, which I assume precludes any sort of lawsuit. If there's any dispute here, is that an issue with this kind of contract?
Generally, we don't agree on arbitration, but it does be under our personal ones, but-
Yeah, I mean, the rest of the-
The consortium was, was satisfied with that, but I, I don't-
It's not binding arbitration with Verizon, it's not, it's with the consultant.
Yeah, with, with Dan Posen, it's, it's, it's not going to be arbitration.
I thought of that, too, and figured that it wouldn't be bad with, with them, at this.
Now, have we, we've used this firm for something else? Um, have we used this firm?
I don't know if we've used them, but we've worked with them. I've worked with Dan Posen a lot, he's good.
Yeah, Dan, Dan represented Cedar Hudson, or the Cedar Hudson Park acquisition transaction. That's the closest we got, and we got to work with him.
That's something else.
I've, I've seen their name in some communication over the years.
He wasn't at McCarthy Finger, Dan Posen was over in his law firm with Les Diamond, Worms or Kylie, they were over there. But then, then a few years ago, the Delaney's people went over to McCarthy Finger, but it's, uh, he, he, I've worked with Dan a lot, on, generally on, um, multi-municipal projects, you know, and, uh, he's, he's good, he's the attorney for Elmspur, he, he still is the attorney for Elmspur. They do quite a, quite a few villages. Oh, they're up in, actually up in Terrytown now, you know, because he gave me a case.
So, this is related to subscriber races, or is, is there something in here about the, uh-
Oh, not Terrytown, Safety Hollow, I'm sorry, Safety Hollow.
I'm sorry, uh, no, 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 I, I just thought you were done, I didn't mean to cut you off.
I was done.
Yes, I had thought.
About like, you know, access, equipment, studio, whatever, is, that's still part of this negotiation to renew that, right?
Yes, and, um, that's where the individual communities may, may diverge from, you know-
Each requirement, you mean, this-
Yeah, because every, every community's going to have different requirements, and that's perfectly fine. But, as Mary Ann suggested, ninety, ninety-five percent of the agreement is, um, you know, boilerplate, industry-specific type language and issues, and the industry is very different, even the ten years now, we've had Verizon, it's, it's very different. You know, the, the, the firms, in this case Verizon is pushing a considerably shorter-length, um, franchise agreement. I, I think probably hedging their bets on the industry, frankly, I mean, I, I don't know, but, but the point is that we'll have an expert who understands the industry and can, can work us through that, and, um, that's the part that, that I was uncomfortable at going, going into this without having someone who understood this really well and understood the industry, so. And then pooling the resources just made sense, because we, these four communities, their agreements expired around the same time.
Do we have specific goals for our new equipment slash whatever?
No.
Facilities, or?
No, we, but we will have to put together a, a needs list.
And what we are talking to, the different departments and?
Yeah.
We're around that, yes, yeah, yeah, okay.
Well, I can just say, um, one other thing in response to Janice's question, I want to see, no, the arbitration provision is in there because the rules of the chief administrator require that, that if there's any fee dispute, it has to be by arbitration. That's a rule that is imposed on all lawyers.
Okay. So, we assume we'll be saving money compared to just going it alone, significant, or?
Well, I mean, we're, we're, we're paying a quarter of what we otherwise would, so, you know, this particular firm is, rate is just under four hundred dollars an hour, so a hundred dollars an hour for services of a, of an expert in this field is, is something I'd do any, any day of the week.
Of course, Verizon will be saving money, too.
Well, yeah.
Ultimately, yeah.
Sure.
So, this was your idea, and you proposed it to the other, and they, cool.
Did any of them agree to that?
All right. Take some credit.
Keep it up. First it's blacktop, now it's fiber cable.
Yeah. Any other questions?
So moved.
Results approved the retainer agreement for twenty sixteen dash thirty-one, the term of McCarthy Finger for legal services related to cable television franchise negotiations, and authorize the village administrator to execute said agreement. I'll make the motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Uh, approval of contract twenty sixteen thirty-two, OBG, for engineering services related to the Halsey Pond Dam. Always nice when you find another dam that New York State looks at.
Yeah, not so much. Um, so, well, first of all, just to clear up some housekeeping, the, what's attached to this agenda is actually not the ultimate contract that I'd be signing. Mary Ann correctly pointed out to me today that, um, what I didn't put on here was our standard consulting agreement that you've seen numerous times, and maybe we'll see plenty of times more. Um, so this, what you see here is the, is the meat of what they're doing, of course.
It'll be the Schedule A.
Yeah, this'll be the scope of services and their fee, so, um, so, this, uh, this agreement, as we've talked about, uh, in the past, the New York State DEC has, um, located the Halsey Pond Dam, it's on their inventory now, uh, they, they've done an inspection of it. Their inspection, um, based upon their, their inspection, their preliminary classification is that the dam is considered a Class C dam, which is a high-hazard dam, uh, which is exactly the classification of the Irvington Reservoir. Despite the fact that it is just a fraction of the size of the Irvington Reservoir Dam, they still believe that there's significant, uh, chance for loss of life and property downstream, should there be a, a breach of the dam. Uh, and also that the, the water exiting the dam, the Halsey Pond, um, should it breach, would cross underneath and potentially over a state road, which is part of what contributes to their classification. It, it eventually goes under Route Nine, uh, near Memorial Park. So, engineers that we're hiring here for not, not an inexpensive amount of money, but a necessary study, they're, they're going to be performing an engineering analysis that will, uh, focus on a few areas, but the first thing that they really would like to look at is, is to fight the classification. Um, and, you know, they, they believe that we can put evidence forward that supports it being a lower hazard classification, which down the road would lead to, uh, lesser costs, lesser maintenance, lesser, not lesser maintenance, but lesser, uh, repetitive costs on an annual basis. Um, and so, we'll see how that goes. Uh, but it does look like there will be work that needs to be done. We've, we've looked at it ourselves, just briefly, and, um, there's been zero maintenance on the dam since the villagers owned it, since the late seventies, early eighties, and, um, there will be work that needs to be done. So, this fee that you see here is, is probably just a fraction of what we're going to spend on that dam, but that's for another day, you know?
You don't know yet what it's going to be, no, right? And there's a second dam that they talked about, another earthen dam downstream further. That seems to be maybe even more questionable shape, but not a DEC dam?
Yeah, that's right. There's an upper, there's the pond, and then there's the lower pond. And I can take you on a field trip someday.
I'm trying to picture it.
But it's interesting, because the lower pond, where Halsey empties into first, before it then goes down Barney Brook, is held back by something that looks like it's about this tall. But when you go on the other side, you realize that actually parts of it might even be taller than the upper dam. So it's quite interesting, and it serves absolutely no purpose. So our engineers looked at it and said, you know, the DEC doesn't really even know it's there, not even if they're watching this. But the point is that we could breach that dam on purpose and basically dispose of it. It doesn't need to be there. So, and that may ultimately be what they recommend. There's no sense maintaining something that doesn't need to be there. Obviously, the upper dam needs to be there to hold, to create Halsey Pond, but the lower Lily Pond doesn't really need to be there.
Is that what they call it?
Larry does.
That's what I just called it.
Is part of the reason, is this, we're prepared to characterize this as partly an investment to make sure we're at the right level of dams so that we're doing appropriate mitigation, not more expensive mitigation than is necessary?
Yes. Yes.
And preventing a catastrophe.
Oh, sure. Oh, yeah. No, I mean, all of this is really is dam safety. I mean, this is what we're doing.
Of course, but we want to make sure we're not, like, over-correcting because we've been over-classified.
And it's, you know, the money we put into the reservoir dam and the valves and stuff was really important. I think it's really helped in terms of being able to use the reservoir as, partially what it was intended to do is storm water mitigation. Because you could draw the water down.
This is to avoid unnecessary...
And it's also, basically, I mean, I think because it keeps water levels running during the summertime, it's actually better for the health of Barney Brook anyways to be able to keep those, keep that reservoir drained down. So the investment in the valves is like, the short of it is, was good investment in multiple ways.
And Larry, what's involved in the overall appeal process to, back to the DEC?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the exact data that they're gathering, because we went through this for the Irvington Reservoir Dam. The Irvington Reservoir Dam was not on the DEC's inventory going back to prior to 2009 or thereabouts. So we went through that process. Right, it'd only been there for a hundred years at that point. So we went through that process with the engineering firm, not with the idea that it was going to be, the classification was going to be lowered. We felt all along that it had the potential, with the amount of water that it held back and the types of properties downstream from there, we felt it was a prime candidate to be a Class C hazard. The issue in that case was that we needed to have the data gathered to ensure that during a certain level storm, whatever the design storm is, that it wouldn't over-top. And by over-topping, then weakens the front of the dam and will cause a breach. So we had to show, we had to do those calculations. We will ultimately have to do those calculations here, but the first step is really to make sure that it's properly classified. So then that'll dictate what the next step is.
It sounds like the dam's already leaking in, to some degree, this...
Yeah, there's, there are spots that are in need of work. I mean, there's full-fledged trees growing out of the front of it, so, I mean, we just had some of those cut down. So we need to get in to do some work, but anyway. No, it wasn't designed that way.
It's not immediate hazard for failure. No, no.
The kids that keep on living.
So, anyone else who can come up with this?
Yes.
Result of group contract 2016-32 with the firm O'Brien and Gear Engineers, Inc. For engineering services related to Halsey Pond Dam and authorize the village administrator to execute said agreement. I'll make the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is approval of contract 2016-33 with Lake Savers LLC for consulting services related to the water body management plan.
Okay, we're having a little theme going tonight, right? So this is a proposal to undertake a study of our two...
Sure, square again.
Our two main, two main water bodies that we're concerned about water quality with, which is the Irvington Reservoir and Halsey Pond itself. And we have identified a firm, it was actually through a competitive RFP, and a firm that will do a series of tests and put together a series of short-term recommendations, should there be any, for water quality issues. And also put together, and those, by the way, could include chemical treatment if it's necessary on a short-term basis. But long-term, the goal is to have some sort of a maintenance plan that would allow us to maintain the water quality in these bodies without the need for a chemical treatment long-term. And so the testing on that, it is over a period of time. It goes into the fall in order to gather a certain amount of baseline data. So the fall of 2017 we're talking about. And the amount of that contract's $4,200, which is pretty reasonable.
And they've been working for somewhere else?
Terrytown was the local reference, yeah.
So the only thing I didn't see in here, Larry, and I don't know how, you know, you went back and, my original feedback to you was that they didn't say in their deliverables that they were going to deliver a long-range plan at the end of their testing in the fall. Or as a result of their testing in the fall, they'd deliver something by some timeline. That was the only thing, and I didn't see it corrected in the document you gave us.
I thought the end of the fourth paragraph covered, you know, after the clarification, it covered what?
You're comfortable with it?
Yeah, this will establish the baseline data and help us make the best recommendations for long-term solutions. I mean, they don't spell out, well, they don't spell out that it's in a document or not in a document, but I think, based upon our conversations, I think we know what to expect.
I guess if I was being, you know, really, you know, a hint of tentative about it, I would have spelt that out as a deliverable by a fixed date, but that's just me.
Well, I think it proves they don't know what they're hunting. Because they don't know when it's going to be, so...
No, no, but the report, if they know they're going to end testing, let's say in September, October, that's a fixed date. They, they could say, okay, in two months, we'll give you a report after that. So the report is just a report. It's not, you know, it's like, here's what we found, and here's some recommendations. That's what it's going to come down to. I don't see that really being all that open-ended. I'm sorry, I'm missing something, Janice.
Well, you're summarizing what you find, and that's what you find, and saying what you recommend based on what you find.
Yeah, but two months, three months?
Maybe you want to write something by the end of the year, thinking, yeah, I want to report by the end of the year.
Or, yeah, something like that would make me feel comfortable, just so that there's actually a target date that you can get forward to.
It's actually, I think, I think we have it around in a different direction, which is in the, in our standard agreement, we have a time of performance of twelve months. And we're signing it in late December now, or mid-December. It's this right where we're talking about.
All right, fine.
So that'll pair with you, then?
Yeah, because I think that...
You got there the way you were thinking, or not?
It's there.
Because we always get there.
Not always, that's our agreement. Result of group contract 2016-33 with Lake Savers LLC for the purpose of finishing furnishing consulting services related to the village's water body management plan creation and authorize the village administrator to execute said agreement. I'll make a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
It's a great name for a company, Lake Savers. If they do anything bad.
I'm really glad that we've taken action as a board on this, because this problem's been creeping up.
I know.
Halsey Pond has been a problem for years since. Like I said before, I think it's really important that we recognize it as part of the commons of the community, and it's our responsibility to ensure the forward viability of the commons.
Kudos to you, you and the one who really...
Keeping us on it.
Thank you for...
You can work for Lake Savers. Well...
I know. Yeah, do that. There's an ethics code for that now.
All right, I mean, that was a joke.
Please, no compliments.
I get involved in that ethics thing.
Confirmation of lead agency status for the secret review of the main station pedestrian improvement project.
So this is really just a kind of buttoning up something that you started back before we submitted the grant application. As part of the grant application for the main Broadway intersection improvements and the station road sidewalks, you indicated in your grant application that you started the secret review, which you did diligently, which was declaring your intent to be lead agency. So we're circling back and having received no objections to that intention, we're having you declare yourselves as lead agency. To be perfectly honest, this is where it's going to stop at this point, until we find out whether there is a war under that Transportation Alternatives Grant Program. And then if there is, if we're lucky enough, we'll happily dive into a secret review as necessary.
And this excludes the section around the northwest corner of Station Road and Broadway?
Yes.
The stuff that would be part of the Parker Ridge development?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
From the tunnel on west.
Between the tunnel and west?
Tunnel west.
Yeah, okay, that part.
About the site of where the culvert's going to be replaced.
Because the rest of it right now is really basically under the, whatever secret was done for the Parker Ridge project.
Right, right, right. And the reason Maine is in there is because it's the intersection.
Main and Broadway, yeah.
It's a little confusing title. Maine.
As opposed to the secondary station.
Yeah.
Whereas it is October nineteen, twenty sixteen regular meeting, the Board of Trustees declared intent to be lead agency to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SECR, review of the main station pedestrian improvement project. And whereas on October twenty-fourth, twenty sixteen, the Board of Trustees circulated its notice of intent to be lead agency to all involved agencies. And whereas more than thirty days have elapsed since the notice of lead agency intent was mailed to all involved agencies, and no such agency has objected, the Board of Trustees acting as lead agency for review of the proposed action, and resolved that the Board of Trustees assumes lead agency status for the secret review of the proposed action. I'll make a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Forces board standing committees and officers.
Their minds.
Four eight thirty?
Oh, my God.
We knew Christine was holding us back all the time.
So I guess we've done basically everything from my point of view. I would just want to suggest that we had an unfortunate timed or unfortunate just resignation from the ECB of a long-term member. So there's definitely openings in the ECB if someone wants to get involved in environmental concerns regarding village development and planning. And other than that, the other groups are meeting on a regular basis. And if you're interested in attending to see what those meetings are like, I guess you can get in touch with me or Larry, and we can give you the dates of the regular schedules of the meetings. They're open for people to come and sit in. I don't have anything else to say, man. I'm out at this point.
Excellent.
Larry?
Well, I'm pleased to update on Wreckin' Parks. And as we know, but I think most people don't realize, there's so much more than Wreckin' Parks, which is done. And, you know, talking about the holiday happening and the beautification committee. We also had our Thanksgiving Home Delivery Program as a great success on Thanksgiving Day. Thanks to the Kopp family for their generous donation to help with the costs associated with the event. We made a hundred and fifty meals and delivered to forty-four locations.
Amazing.
We had additional forty people making deliveries in addition to the crew that were there preparing the meals as well. And that really is, is a wonderful opportunity for the staff and the volunteers to get together. I know Larry's there almost all the time. And Tony, I saw you there as well.
Robert, Mr. Segal.
Yes, John's there on a regular basis. And now it's time for the Christmas Delivery Program. You can use your help. Please consider being part of this other important event to those that need help in our community. Contact Laura Ojo and get an email explaining how you can help. And they also do things that are relevant to parks and recs. So please be aware that all the bathrooms in Memorial, Cedar Hudson, and Matheson are not closed for the winter. And please do not feed the geese in our parks and in our woods.
Or the cats.
Or the cats.
Or the cats.
Or the sheep.
Are you item number one on that?
I skipped through.
Oh, my gosh. I wasn't ready.
You can skip already, Larry.
No, I'll figure it out, I'll figure it out. I went out on an e-blast a little earlier tonight with something I really wanted to feature. And that is the, on Thursday night at the theater right here, the Irvington Historical Society and the theater are linking up to show North by Northwest, a famous movie, Hitchcock movie, that featured what little village in the film?
Hastings.
No. What was the village? You have to go to find out what village shows up in that film. So it's Thursday night, coming right up, and it's seven, it's early, it's seven...
Seven o'clock.
Seven. I think it's fifteen hours. So the other film that is coming up, a little longer time to plan on this one, is called Beyond Glory. This is, this was interesting, because the Smith family used to live in Irvington on Ferris. Producers of this.
Who is it?
And did you want to say a little bit about the film itself? It's because it does have a veterans, I think it's several stories about several veterans, soldiers' experiences. So I think it'll be of interest to...
They said that the local vets as well as the veterans take to it as well.
Yeah.
You know, I'll Google it while Janice is talking.
Yeah, yeah. So that's a theater thing. The, you know, I've met with the housing committee, and we're in the process, and Larry Longke will be, I will be filling him in on what was happening. And they will be very happy to...
All the dirt, right?
What?
All the dirt.
All the dirt, right. But the one thing that we're trying to get up on the village website are all the parts of the tax shock forum that Janice presented at, and I was introduced it, and there was a lot of good information. And we're just anxious to be sure that people who couldn't go that day couldn't get that information easily. And it's being put together, I think the video that is probably around now...
It's being processed.
It's being processed. So, and the paperwork is being processed, too. So people who know they wanted more information about how to afford to stay in their homes, especially given the major tax increase that some people experienced, this forum was designed to provide information, not a magic bullet, but several things that could be helpful, including the two laws that we passed here. We call them the in-law apartment law and the accessory apartment law. So there are a lot of efforts being made by that committee, and then by our board here in that regard. The Historic District Committee is continuing to review the guide document. It's almost done, almost, almost done. And we actually did a little walk-through of Village Hall today to see, play, display some architectural features from a historic home. And there might be something else, but I can't think of what it is. So when Janice is speaking, I will think if I forgot.
We better be quick.
Okay, okay. Oh, right, oh, okay, okay.
It follows acclaimed actor Stephen Lang as he tracks the ten-year odyssey behind his one-man show about eight Medal of Honor recipients. I knew all the Medal of Honor winners in there somehow, so.
Right, I knew it was about...
It's about Stephen Lang, as well as, you know, obviously his, the characters he portrayed, which were Medal of Honor winners.
And the date on that one is?
Sixteen. Friday, December sixteenth, seven thirty PM. This one's only $10.
Yeah, so there are two movies, and then there are other things going on at the theater. But they're always, you know, very fascinating things. That would have a lot of interest. And also the North by Northwest that I mentioned earlier.
If you've never seen North by Northwest...
Have you seen it, Cary Grant?
I've seen it multiple times. It's just...
I've never seen it on a big screen, though.
The incredible movie.
Yeah, so...
See you on the nose.
Well, this is a bittersweet report on Highway and Water, since I will no longer be their liaison. So I know that Connie will do a wonderful job, but it was, we arm wrestle to see who we get them. Seriously, I learned a great deal from both of these gentlemen, from both Greg and Jimmy Englishby, about what they do and the essential nature of what they do, both in day-to-day maintenance, dealing with emergencies as they come up, and preparing ahead. Thanks to them both, and thanks for their staff for the wonderful job they do. Specifically, this month, Highway Department is preparing winter equipment, obviously, repairing a sinkhole on West Clinton Avenue, maintenance on East Sunnyside Lane parking lot and the reservoir parking lot, new signs as for the traffic committee, and cleaning catch basins with the back hall. Water Department has been reading meters, winter maintenance of Water Department properties, checking high bill issues, and shutting up the water is, was meant, part of the Water Department report. Shutting up water at Memorial, Matheson Park, and the senior garden.
That's it?
Any else, Connie?
No, I can't think of it.
I did have one question for Larry. I saw, as we were walking in, I saw there was some village e-blast about the Aqua Crossing...
Oh, yeah.
...designed. Could we talk about that? There's some paperwork that people can view now, design docs.
Yeah. Everything's posted. So we, you know, we have preliminary plans that have been saved, but it's been circulated to a couple of different internal bodies, the Architecture Review Board, and also the old defunct, but still in existence, Main Street Steering Committee. And then we posted it on the village website.
And the schools looked at it as well.
The schools, they're involved in, as one of the stakeholders, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so yes, anyone who goes on the village website, the plan for the... area, very exciting plans for that change, traffic calming and other goals that that project has, very exciting to look at the plan.
So this is what was submitted to the state or?
Yes.
And do they have some turnaround time, like forever?
I don't know.
Hopefully quick.
Right. It'll be fine.
One other thing I wanted to mention before I turn over is, starting the Village of Tarrytown, we did send another e-blast today, but actually starting today, December fifth, you can expect significant traffic delays on Route nine, South Broadway.
Oh, my God, I didn't turn around.
Between Benedict Avenue and Route 119. This is actually, the contractors are selling the Westchester County Sanitary Sewer Force Main on Route nine. It'll take reduction in lanes from two lanes to one. Traffic will be stopped in northbound direction, allow southbound traffic to move within the closure but reversed. Roadway will be limited to one lane for a period of up to five weeks through January sixth, which happens to be my birthday, and we can go drive around Tarrytown. It's going to be Monday through Friday, nine a.m. to three thirty P.M. Recommended drivers use Route 119 to avoid this area. Notice signs are being installed, alert drivers to delays, recommended routes avoid the area. I will say this is in addition to the water main project that is south of there. So we now have two construction projects going on in that.
And old bridge activity.
As well as building Giant Bridge.
The delays with the water main are taking it along Route nine between 119 and just a little bit south of Benedict Avenue.
If patient first, work the terrible traffic, stop, they're ripping up the road.
Yeah, I think we need a ferry to Tarrytown.
Start it in Dons, perhaps.
Do our business and.
Yeah, it's shocking south. So I just want to give everyone a heads up there. Obviously, it's not our project, but we, I did, some residents emailed me expressing concern about it backing up south of Lynnhurst, making sure that the Tarrytown police were aware of it, and I've spoken to their mayor, so they're aware of it anyway. So, well, if it's bad, we'll lob in some phone calls, but at least just during a festive time.
Yes, to stay home.
Hopefully, there'll be lots of bad weather and push it back into the spring. But that's all I have. Village Administrators report.
So we had a very good meeting this morning at our normal department head meeting. We met with our planning consultant, David Smith. He met with all of our department heads all at once, and it was a very productive meeting, got him to have a chance to understand what everyone does and what everyone's challenges are and, you know, areas of interest, because he knows that, you know, these are the people that are, have boots on the ground and see things, you know, very closely every day. So it was a very productive meeting. That was after last week when we met. Marian and I went on a tour with David around the village.
In the water main.
It was a little wet that day, but we were in a car, so it was fine. So you got to see more of Irvington than you ever probably wanted to, so it was a good tour. Oh, and the third item on that is that he will be, David will be coming to the December fourteenth work session.
Oh, good.
Purpose of that is really to kick this off, to discuss, you know, how we're looking to approach this comprehensive plan update, some of the areas that we'll be looking at, you know, understanding how you feel about approaching it and how you want to see it managed, and looking at, you know, timeframes and a bunch of things, just initial kickoff stuff to get this thing moving. So that's on the fourteenth.
And then we had the wayfinding consultant show up.
Yes, that's right. Sorry, that wasn't on my list. So we did have a, I guess, with our wayfinding consultant who came up from Virginia. She spent a day and a half here walking around the village and taking pictures and assembling a report that we just got a draft of that you'll eventually see. But, you know, got a good flavor for what we find important here. The two trustees, trustee Keough and trustee Gillland met along with myself to give her a pretty good overview of what Irvington's about and its downtown especially.
That's right. And she spoke to folks on the street as, to get a flavor too. And for people who are wondering what wayfinding is, it's a signage style, but some people think that's a strange word for it, but it's the integrated signage for the whole village, kind of a branding. She had lots of good ideas.
Yeah, that's what we'll say.
It was a very hopeful kickoff meeting.
Yeah.
She's a mark of the same school.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
That's all I have. Village Clerk Treasurers report.
Nothing for tonight.
Village Attorney's report.
Public comment.
Public comment.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about two issues. One is the parking at Artsleyon Hudson Metro Station. A few issues have been discussed before and I was promised that the board will look into perhaps turning six-hour parking spots into permitted spots as well as issuing only one parking permit per. I don't know if anything has been done so far in regards to this. Also, I'm not too sure whether that would be sufficient enough to move the line. And as far as I understand, there are about eighty families waiting for the parking spot by Artsleyon Hudson Metro Station. And given that the line is not moving whatsoever, or at least it hasn't moved for over two years, which I personally find extremely strange, because I've been waiting in this line for two years and two months approximately, maybe slightly more. So I just find it strange that the houses are being sold, yet the parking permits seem to disappear into nowhere, because I registered in number eighteen. So two years and two or three months after, I'm still number eighteen. So I decided to dig further and I actually calculated the number of houses which were sold ever since I've been standing in this line, which turned out to be exactly two hundred houses sold from September fifteenth until the third week of November. I think this, by now, there should have been more than two hundred houses, because the Zillow does not update the information every day, they about two weeks delete. So like I said, I just find it extremely strange that the line is not moving at all. And at this point, I think this issue should be investigated. And investigated and not just by someone who deals, you know, with the parking permits on everyday basis.
Okay.
And here also, I'll save another question.
Sure.
Which I had is, which was about the kind of documents which are used to establish the residency here, because I'm afraid that there is a potential for variables, especially given that, as we know, in Artsley, there is no metro station, yet I bet that at least some certain percentage of its residents works in the city. So they commute to the city somehow, either by going to Irvington or to Scarsdale, Hartsdale, which I'm sure have even more difficult parking situation. So again, an investigation or an audit, I believe, should be done to check on this issue. Just taking into account all of the probabilities and possibilities, I just do not believe that the line should not have moved at all. And personally, I have to deal with this every morning, five days a week.
Well, I know we did lose ten spots that, you know, obviously right in the front that Hudson House took back. So that was tough. You know, we did turn, we had turned more into, not permit parking, metered parking that we ended up turning back into parking permits. But, you know, I think that, I mean, I think we just see, I mean, the spots are full, you know, I think the purring process, you know.
Let me add one thing. Just like the mayor said, they had lost ten spots right about that time two years ago. At that point, they had more permits issued than spaces available.
Yes, that was part of the problem.
That was a part of the problem. So we had to wait until those were absorbed through attrition of people moving out. When we send out our parking renewals, we're not aware of any people moving out of those people that had permits. So right at this point is where we send out now our renewals to see how many people renew the existing parking permits. So once we see that, and we'll see that in early January, and based upon how many people renew, then we're able to open up a list again.
So some of the questions.
I don't know. Yeah. As the timing of how we become aware of how many people are renewing and how many do.
But what prevents people from using their old addresses, applying for the new yearly permit? That's why I suggested to use the copies of the deeds to be used, just to make it all fair and to establish every year that that particular person is a resident.
Well, you do. You have to be the owner of the home.
And you have to be on the tax rolls, right?
Yeah, I mean, for other permits too, you have to show either a lease, a utility bill.
Something that you were getting mail your current address and you want.
Yes, the address record.
Well, with the lease, you know, it's very simple. You just buy the lease completed and apply for the permit. And that's precisely why I'm making this point, that the line is not moving despite over two hundred houses have been sold.
Yeah, I think what, and I don't know that we have time tonight to go into all the details, but I think what I had said at a previous meeting and maybe even in some correspondence with you is that I believe that some of the parking along the spaces where there's the tennis courts and on up the hill, so the farthest spaces from the train station, are being used by people who do not have permits, which is currently allowed by the way the hourly rate is. We talked about the six-hour limit. So I, and I think I said in a past meeting that we will be looking to change that. I started that process this past week by setting up a meeting with the Artsley Country Club, who are the operators of those tennis courts, so that we can try to come up with a balance for allowing for appropriate parking in the vicinity of those tennis courts and yet restricting the parking in such a way that we can actually enforce it. If I were to send, if the parking lot is full right now and I send the police out to go check permits, they're going to probably find, you know, fifty percent of the ones up by the tennis courts are people without permits, and that's a problem. That's what's causing the backfilling of the spaces that you've identified of people that probably sold and no longer use. They're being backfilled, I think it's by Mercy College people, but I don't know for sure. But our laws don't allow us.
I park there as well and I've got the parking ticket obviously, because I parked there for a lot more than six hours, because I work in the city, I commute to the city. I need at least ten hours more.
Right. So if we can get the law tightened up in that section to reduce the timeframe and possibly reduce the number of spaces that actually have a time limit and everything else will be permit only, then we'll be able to enforce it much more easily. And I think the true usage of what's being, the true number of what's being used in that lot will be more evident. Right now, it looks like it's full and that's, there's something not right with that as you've identified. So we are working on fixing that.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. And what about also one permit per family?
That's up to this board. I haven't made that recommendation yet.
Because if there are eighty families awaiting only at the Artsleyon Hudson Metro Station, I don't know how many families are waiting here in Irvington.
Well, we probably will put on the agenda a review of all that, you know, not, you know, that issue of one family or not, it's something that we would need to discuss and decide, which I think we probably will discuss. I don't know exactly when. My one question was about when you so clearly described how you send, at this time of year, you send out.
Going out like next week.
Right. So you're sending a notice.
It's a renewal to one of the residents.
Right. And as you say.
To their registered address.
And you would know that that person lives there if they're a taxpayer, right?
We can cross-reference.
But you could.
Absolutely.
So that would, you know, easily show it if you had to, but there's no real, you know, it's, I mean, do you have any?
I think it might be worth to do a sanity check if possible this time around since we did. Once and last time, that kind of confirmation's been done.
Let me check with Sarah, who sends them out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the exact methodology of, you know, annually, for those people that, you know, once they establish, yeah, let me check with her, how she was established. But we're very strict on having people prove residency.
Yeah.
That's.
Well, if it's a copy of the lease, it might not be enough, but.
A lease would be enough, documented lease or an address? I don't know.
Well, it's easy to buy a lease, you know, fill up the address and then make a copy and submit it for the permit. So if you could look into taxes.
You can do a fake driver's license. Fake D, I mean, you could keep filling out and that.
I think the structure of our laws is the problem with that. I think you're going to.
Yeah, I think we're going to be able to find.
We can.
I think what we're going to do is we're going to find some additional spaces and we'll be able to move some of the line this year, I hope, especially when we address the further up spots by the tennis courts. That might be a dozen, two dozen spots. I'm not sure how big it is, but.
I hope so. I hope it will get to number eighteen.
Let me add something that last time you were here, you asked the board for the ability to pay via a cell phone. And that's something that the village actually is ready to implement and we're just waiting for a training date. So we have, with everything really ready to roll out within the next couple of weeks.
That's good to know, thank you. So your request has been met on. If I'm not there by seven thirty, there is no spot available. And I know that there are more and more people moving in, I'm actually meeting them and they also want to be driving to the station.
We certainly heard your request and we have to hold on.
Thank you, glad to hear that. So I'll proceed to the second issue, I'll try to be fast. So the second issue is the speeding on South Broadway. I just sent an email about this this morning, I'm not sure if you had a chance to read that, but basically it's based on the information of the TCE, DCI, I'm not sure, audit which was done. And it looks like the ninety, about ninety-five percent of the speeding tickets are issued on South Broadway, which does not surprise me at all. What is surprising though, that it's only about two hundred speeding tickets per year, because I think it should be at least that much per day, to tell you the truth, because living in five Cindy Lane, which is right in between Langdon and Clinton Avenues, I could tell that everyone speeds there, just everyone. And if they would be speeding at forty miles, that's one thing, but at least half of the vehicles drives at the speed of fifty and sixty miles per hour. And I see that a lot of work has been done to slow down traffic on some side streets, some local quiet streets, where it's almost impossible to speed, given the, given the number of turns, maybe by five more miles per hour. But what I'm dealing with is one with the drivers that speed twice as much at the posted limit. And I have children that are walking to school with a nanny. I have three-year-old twins that have to cross the road and with the vehicles passing by at sixty miles an hour, it's very difficult. It's difficult even for me, an adult, and I have to run, but especially for them. And I know that there are obviously hundreds, if not thousands, of people that are trapped on that side of Broadway and whether they are going to walk to the Aqueduct or they have to commute to the station. And I'm seeing more and more people walking, because they have no choice, obviously. And it just makes the crossing very unsafe. And I see that nothing is happening. I mean, I mean. unsafe. And I see that nothing is happening. I mean, I spoke with the, with the state, but it's difficult to deal with the state, especially if I, if I have no support from the, from the board. Then I spoke with the police, and okay, they dropped the empty car on our intersection, which perhaps sort of helped. I wouldn't mind if they would put the drop in their empty vehicle every day, actually, but they told me they only had two vehicles. On the way here, I counted four, but anyway. So, I was wondering whether, if something could be done in regards to this issue, perhaps instead installing the camera, which could also help to raise the revenue for the town, or just to do anything to enforce the law. I'm not asking for anything extra. I'm not sure how easy it would be to put the stop sign or pedestrian crosswalk in that area. I know that it has, it has to be dealt with the state, but meanwhile, what could be done meanwhile to enforce the law?
It's a little bit ironic that we're under heat as a board for the police focusing too much on South Broadway from everyone, from the other areas of the, of the village. So, that's kind of one. I thought it was a little ironic. You know, it's, I think that the police do actually focus on that area, because that's where we've actually had the, the few, you know, kind of fatal accidents. And so, that's, you know, highest on the chief's list. They have that nice spot where they kind of sit and wait in different places to write the tickets. You know, I think that the, unfortunately, the cameras aren't allowed in, except for New York City, Yonkers, White Plains. It's only allowed in cities, basically, by state law. So, we can't put in the speed cameras or the red light cameras. So, our hands are tied there. One of the things we are doing is we're, we're going to be hiring another police officer that will, that we're going to allow someone to focus on traffic exclusively throughout the day. Right now, we only have two people on the road typically. We're going to add a third person on the road, and then we're going to be identifying, you know, kind of the focus areas. That's, you know, I think Broadway's already been identified by the police as a focus area, especially South Broadway, because the park were kind of opens up after you're kind of bottlenecked through Main Street. So, I think that they're very aware of the speeding issues there. So, we're hopeful that that extra officer on the road during kind of prime hours is going to make a big difference and increase the number of tickets, not just on South Broadway, but throughout the village as well.
As far as crossing Broadway, there's a, where, where would be the, the spot to cross that is actually a crossing area? I mean, of course, it's hard to cross if you don't have the stripes and everything, but.
West Clinton have cross, crosswalks?
Yeah, West Clinton is probably the closest to the north. And then, of course, Langdon is, is the next traffic, I mean, if you're talking about traffic lights.
Yeah, to be able to cross safely Broadway, you just can't, you have to go one way or the other.
Well, they, the sidewalk is located on the other side. And for instance, in the lane, there's a little cul-de-sac, so you cannot get out of it unless you cross Broadway.
So, there's no sidewalk on your side?
No. Sidewalks the entire east side of Broadway.
It's never there.
It's, it's part of the focus of that Route Nine corridor stuff that we're looking at, to be honest with you. But that's years away. I'm just being honest about this.
Right, more sidewalks.
It's a very difficult problem. We know that.
So, as much as we can do at the moment.
Say your name, while you're.
Oh, yeah, Katheryna Medina. I'm sorry.
Can you spell that for me?
K-A-T-E-R-I-N-A. Last name is Medina, M-E-D-I-N-A.
Thank you.
I also know that in Sleepy Hollow, the four lanes were changed into two lanes to slow down traffic. And I've heard that, even here, that people are not a fan, are not big fans of narrowing the road. But I think that the interests of residents of that, of East Broadway should also be considered.
On that one, I have to say that the Traffic Committee has recommended that the village look into, you know, narrowing Broadway and adding some sort of sidewalk, bike lane, that kind of thing, the entire length. But part of that, what Larry was alluding to was that rather than having the village expend money on a traffic consultant to get a study done, there was a study that emerged out of the River Towns based on the New York Bridge, the New York Bridge. There was money available for planning purposes, and there's actually a grant being applied for right now. Is that correct? Yes.
Yeah, it was awarded. It's a hundred and fifty.
Oh, it's the RFP that's been.
Right, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that was awarded to the, the five communities from Sleepy Hollow down to Hastings. And we are, you know, full-fledged members of that effort to look at the entire length of Broadway and try to make it more of a complete street, which is bicycle-friendly, pedestrian-friendly, you know, as well as accommodating the necessary vehicles. And, you know, the big issue that all of those communities are facing is that Broadway bisects all of those communities and causes the problems that you're describing. If you live in a certain area between, you know, in this case, West Clinton and Langdon, where there's two traffic lights, if you live in that area, which you do, you're on an island. Same thing on North Broadway. You're, you're stranded on, on the east side of Broadway. So, it's not, it's not something that we're, we're ignoring or, or we're succumbing to people's pressure that we don't want it to be reduced from four lanes down to two with a turn lane. Those are all ideas that need to be studied to see what that'll do to traffic, what that'll do, you know, all the impacts of that. And, but, but that's, just that study alone is, is, is just about a year away from being done. And then after that, there's the notion of construction, which is probably many years after that in order to implement. I mean, we'll have to see.
What can be done meanwhile to just enforce the laws?
That's, that's a different issue. We'll take that back to the Police Department. I think that's, this board has been very clear about that. But the.
It is ironic, though, that we've had dozens of people complaining that they focus too much on South Broadway.
But I think what the bottom line of that is, is just that there needs to be more overall focus, because I know, we all know that both sections of Broadway can have excessive speed going on regularly.
I drive myself, so I know where people speed more, where they speed less. On North Broadway, it doesn't speed much. First of all, there is, there are two lines within one block near Main Street. Then there is another one on Sunside Lane.
It's that, well, there's a strip between the high school and Sunnyside that people try to pick up speed. But coming on the south end of Broadway, I mean, obviously, you get out of Dobbs Ferry, and now it's a jock, you go from two lanes to four lanes, and it's a jockeying for position, you know, like trying to get ahead of everyone.
And between, they go sixty. And that's, that's the problem I'm having.
So, we're very aware. We're approaching this in many different ways. None of them are quick fixes. And you also need to hear what, what has been said here, that other people have concerned, different kinds of concerns. People came here and completely, many people said, there's too much focus on South Broadway. They need many, many different people cut up, one after one, and talked about what was going on in their particular streets, and the dangers and the difficult conditions it posed. You know, we live in a village. Route Nine goes through it. We hear you. We're looking at it from many different angles, but, you know, this is what we can do tonight.
I understand. But on local streets, you can, you can put the stop sign. You can do pedestrian zebra, whereas on Broadway, you cannot do that, right?
Then people go through the stop signs, and people go through the.
Maybe, maybe people speed thirty-five on thirty miles on, but they don't go sixty on thirty miles on. It's just impossible.
Well, that's why ninety-five percent of our tickets, ninety-five percent of our speeding tickets were on Broadway. But, but we, we're definitely very, very focused on traffic. We just had two hearings in the last month, so we're definitely focused on it. I think.
Thank you. We're really gonna, thank you. That's.
I see. That's great. Just one more thing.
I think, I think that's the amount of time we have.
Could there be any warning signs posted for the motorists? Because I've been trying to post such myself, but five of them were stolen from me. After I kept attaching them to the pole, which is two feet away from Broadway. I don't know if someone's just playing a joke, stealing those figures.
We've had a lot of stuff taken. And some of it's kids thinking it's funny, some, or, or they're, they have a game going on, or some of it might be.
Or annoyed with the.
Annoyed residents, yeah. I don't know.
Yeah, mine was stolen off my lawn. My slow down Irvington sign was stolen off my lawn too. So, you know, it's a, it's an issue. I don't know. There's a quick fix for that either. I actually installed the cameras on my, my.
No, I have trees that prevent the cameras from seeing that angle.
Thank you for sharing, and we're, I think we're.
I understand. But so, so can they sign, be posted on Broadway, something that would not be stolen, that would at least warn motorists, that people, and specifically children are crossing there?
That's, you have to, that's from the state. We don't actually get to put signs on Broadway. So, we could petition the state and ask, but I'm not sure if they're just going to put up, you know, kind of slow children signs on Broadway. I don't know the answer to that. We could, we could find out.
We can ask.
Okay.
Sure.
Ashen Island, Larry? Oh, any additional public comment?
No additional public.
We got wearing, didn't we?
Sorry, David. Uh, review of Ashen Island, sorry.
Two items that came up. One is, I'll be asking Greg about a little bit of history regarding the garbage pickup on Main Street, timing-wise, and, and also just to notify the contractors of the new chipping regulations.
Yes. If you want to look into additional signage on Broadway, safe signage.
I'm not sure what that will consist of. That's what.
I'm not sure either.
That's what I'm a little bit concerned about. Okay, great. Thanks.
Welcome, Larry Lockey. Thank you for joining us.
I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. Would you like to, would you like to make that motion? So, vote? Second is, and all voted for. Ready to one, fellas?